Well, good evening and welcome to today's meeting. Today is Tuesday, September the 5th, 2023. The time is now 6:00 PM. The regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Trinidad, will now come order, in person as well as virtually in Zoom. So if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please.
Debono?
Here.
Criega?
Here.
Ogoltri?
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
Item two approval of the agenda. The one item that I'd like to get removed, and that is item AI, which is the last item on the, just the, public hearing, which we're supposed to have, set up public hearing for the gathering increases, so we're going to remove that tonight. Any other changes the council would like to make? Do you have a motion?
So move.
Would you please mention that removal of AI? In your--
Yes, I would make a motion that we remove AI from the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Criega?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy items, staff report to Mr. Ruger.
Mr. Mayor, nothing under this section tonight.
Okay, you want to wait till this talk until the end? Is that what you want to do?
Well--
I don't know if you want to do that now because we have a pretty good audience--
Yeah, we can bring that up now, so--
That would be a good idea.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So wanted to talk a little bit about grants and how we apply for them and what we're looking for in matching grants to our community. And we talked a little bit about this at our work session. There's been comments about lots of money being available for the city and that we should be going for those things, but I just wanted to remind everyone that we have to look for staffing, we have to look for matching funds, and we have to look for the fit for our community as well when we look at grant applications. So just wanted to remind everyone that we are actively pursuing grants that are appropriate for us, but we can't always go for everything that's out there.
Yeah, and I wanted to add a few things. We have a pretty good audience here. You know, there's always a lot of concern about decisions, the ways, decisions that are made by council. We have an excellent staff in the city, and we, we take direction from them. They have, they're the experts. You know, we are elector officials. We're not here day in and day out to hear everything and say everything. We hear a lot of stuff from the streets, through other means, mass media. But I wanted to say that, you know, we council, we support our staff across the board. I believe that they do a really, really good job. Decisions that we make sometimes are difficult decisions, but sometimes we do have to make them. The other thing that we get hit on quite a bit is transparency. We're always hearing about the city council is not transparent. You know, we are very transparent. We have work session meetings one week, and then we have a meeting, a such as a regular meeting tonight, maybe other Tuesday. What we do is, in our work sessions, we have, bring all these discussions forward, and then we move any of those, if there is a consensus, if not a vote taken at the work session, it's a consensus of whether to move forward with a particular agenda item on the next meeting. The only thing that we are not, we cannot be transparent on, of course, are executive sessions. Executive sessions are completely, completely different. And executive sessions are coordinated, they're dictated to us by the state, rules and regulations, as well as our chart. So those items are, are things that we take into account. A lot of times, decisions are, will come out later on from discussion, strictly discussion. The other thing we get hit on, I've heard it written in the newspaper, that we are not going out to Denver or other places to find out what's going on and to raise our hands. And I will tell you this, in 2016, when I took this seat, that was one of the things that I said I would do. And I have done that. I've gone to Denver, raised our hands to say Trinidad is still part of Colorado. We've become very, very acquainted with people at the state level, with people from board, made actually some good friends with some of these top people. People from the Office of Economic Development, International Trade, Action 22, other mayors across the state, even met with the Speaker of the Houses, the Senate President in the past, even the governor. So we've established a really good rapport at the state level, and I'm not the only that's done it. There's been a couple of others that have run up as well. So we've all made an effort to try to reach out to Denver and the people up there that are decision makers, to try to help us in Trinidad. So please don't think that we are not reaching out to our public officials at the state level, not only state level, but the federal level. Last, the, last March, I traveled to Washington DC to the Association of Defense Communities to see, you know, and I traveled to a large meeting, I was up there, there were probably maybe eighteen hundred people there, the high military people--
May I request a point of order?
Okay.
I was just wanting to see how it's fitting to the agenda.
Well, this--
It's a staff report.
Is there a problem with that, do you think, Les?
Well, it's not a staff report, Mayor. I mean, I, I would just ask that you try to conclude your remarks, please. Thank you.
But I just wanted to say, if there's any questions, please come to council. If anybody asks any question, come to council and get, get your information. Okay? Thank you. Item four, petitions or communications. I see we have quite a few people signed up for a particular line item, and I know that some of you may have some questions on that particular item, and there's probably going to be some redundancy. So please keep your, if you're going to be redundant in your, in your speaking points, you might want to kind of compel them a little bit. At this point, what I will do is I will turn this over to the item that we have on here. Item 48, Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Chamber of Commerce, President Presentation.
Hello. We're forward to talking in all business owners and organizational groups. Pat Howlett?
Mayor, Council, Staff, good to be here.
Go ahead, Pat, sorry. Great. Good to be here, thanks much. My name is Pat Howlett. Instead of running for any of these offices, as I tried a couple of years ago, I decided I could do more help in the community by joining the dedicated staff and board at the Los Angeles, Trinidad, Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. It's a 442-year-old institution that everyone across our history who helped build the community at one time was a member. Everyone of the Rapp brothers, if you look at anybody out there, they were a member of this institution. We were stewards of it. We've kind of inherited it. We currently find ourselves in a state of crisis, open and transparent, I think is the thing that we always try and do. The best way out is to reboot the chamber to a new operating system, one that serves the best interest of our businesses, organizations, and residents. We intend to be, we intend to be the voice of business for organizations and for economic development, stay in our lane with regards to that. We currently have eighty-three active members, three hundred and eighty-four total contacts who were members at one time, and if anybody's watching this, our board and I want to personally encourage you renew and rejoin during this reboot. An active membership drive is on, is on right now and for the next sixty days, and the objective is to reach two hundred and fifty members. Once we reach two hundred and fifty members, we will be on financially stable footing. So we won't be a hand down organization, we'll be a hand up organization. I personally visited over a hundred businesses in the past two weeks across Trinidad, I piloted, passed Stonewall. I'll be heading out to Aguilar on Thursday, and I'll be in Hominy next week. I'll begin, and our team will begin personal phone calls and email outreach to past members this week to reintroduce our chamber to them. Our intention is to represent the smallest and largest, from agriculture to high tech. We have a complete website, presence rebuilt underway right now, new easy to understand benefits packages, and we'll be able to easily answer the questions, the question we always get, what do I get for my membership investment? We intend to concentrate on the following, help members connect and grow their businesses, attract new businesses with a focus on small scale manufacturing, partner with other entities to assist with regional economic development, improve the quality of life residence, young and old. Teach Me Treat Me, Fisher's Peak Outfitters, and Tequila's Family Mexican Restaurant just joined up. Tequila's has not been a member in twenty years. Things are changing, and we're seeing that in the community. And Hilton Garden will have their ribbon cutting soon. I believe we'll have thirty new members within the next two weeks, and we believe we'll snowball to our goal after that. As part of our active, active role, we will include the city and county, and we look forward to your ideas and we look forward to helping. One of our priority advocate positions is helping educate our members and the public to the degree we can that the new lodging tax increases, a citizen's quality of life tax that everyone benefits from, including those who visit and pay. As we improve our community, we can better serve them, they'll like the community better, and they'll return. They get money back from that, from that benefit. We like to work directly with city management staff where we best can serve and provide ongoing updates to the council. We just did a downtown cleanup on Main and Commercial on Saturday morning, coordinating, we're coordinating with the River Cleanup Team, taking their success and modeling it in certain areas. We collected three bags of trash and four wheelbarrows full of sand, grit, and cigarette butts, and it's our intention to grow this to other areas, and when we're doing this, we're fostering ownership in the businesses there. What we ask them to do is, you take care of the front, you take care of the back of your area, we'll take the orphaned areas and the gutters. Lastly, we have an idea for a local pop-up music festival, and we're looking to sharing more details once we get, when we're planning with our stakeholders, and I think you'll appreciate that. We see good seeds ahead, seeds ahead, and as Jimmy Buffett would say, fins up. Any business owner or organization that leaves us here tonight, please call me, or anybody in the staff, and if you have any questions for me now or anytime, I look forward to answering them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Before we move on, I wanted to read, because we have so many people signed up to speak tonight. Just trying to ensure, ensure all electronic devices, including cell phones, are either turned off or set to silent mode. Item two, out of respect for all attendees, we request that we do all of any hats. Another head covering, head covering is during the meeting unless required for religious or medical reasons. Participants wishing to address the council are required to state their full legal name for the official record. Please note the city council will not respond immediately to comments raised under petitions and communications. However, council or staff members will address and follow up on all inquiries as appropriate. We ask each speaker to maintain a respectful and courteous demeanor, refraining from personal attacks, attacks, misuse, foul, or abusive language. Civil discourse is appreciated and expected at all times. We request all audience members to respect other rights by not causing noise or disturbances that could potentially disrupt the proceedings of the meeting. We have a couple of letters that did receive, actually note. One I received from the family of Joe Riorda, and it says, Mayor Rico and council members, thank you for the memorial resolution, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acknowledging the contributions of Joseph A. Riorda to the city of Trinidad with love and appreciation, Montelioni and Riorda families. And then I also got a letter from Mr. Robert Arco. Kind of hard to read a lot, it was kind of skittled, it was very, very difficult, but I kind of got the gist of it. And one of the things that he mentioned is that he would like maybe the city and the county to come, come to maybe have a joint services agreement. I'm not sure exactly what he meant by that, maybe equipment, I don't know exactly what he meant by that, but if you want to talk to him, call him, I'm not sure if he has his phone number, see what he meant by that. He also was concerned about with the Chronicle news, now that they're only sending print out once a week, and he was thinking that, I'm not sure, it's something that in our purview, if we could provide maybe a, some kind of a newsprint or a print, send out weekly or something that we do. Not sure if that's something that we can, we are, have to do, so. But that was kind of the, the gist of what he was talking about. Let's move over to people that have signed up. Karen Klingenberg?
Hey, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Karen Klingenberg, and I am co-owner of SoCo Mountain Art Emporium. Pretty sure by now you're all aware that we were notified by Quote of the West that none of the retail spaces at Space to Create would be offered a new lease as of October 1st. While Suites A and C have already given their notice to vacate, we at Suite B had hoped for an opportunity to expand into Suite A, and we're planning a one-year birthday party for SoCo Mountain Art Emporium. Friday morning at 9:00 AM is when we got that call. It was a first Friday. It was a night that we had prepared to introduce three new artists to the art community. We had paid Space to Create to rent the space directly behind our shop, and we had paid Three Sisters Fried Bread to cater the event. We were shocked, we were upset, we were sad, and Dale and I struggled to find a way to explain this decision by our city to our participating artists. So, but let me tell you a little bit about SoCo Mountain Art Emporium. Dale and I opened the shop having zero retail experience. We opted for a one-year lease because of that, and although we were urged a lot to try to sign a two-year lease, but we chose not to do that, we began asking fellow artists in the community to join us, and before we knew it, we had over twenty artists. So let's talk about them for a minute. Currently, we have twenty-seven artists. Eighteen are from Los Angeles County, one from Canyon City, one from Colorado Springs, four from Pueblo, one from Manitou Springs, one originally from Fort Collins, and now one from St. Louis. Out of twenty-seven artists, eighteen are on social security and two are veterans. From September 29th, 2022, which is when we opened, to September 1st, 2023, our shop brought in approximately $55,000. $38,121 went into the pockets of our artists, so that's about sixty-eight percent. $7,680 went to the city for rent, which we actually paid off in July. And we paid $4,467.86 in retail taxes so far. Since opening, we donated to fourteen local organizations within the Trinidad community by way of art, for silent auctions, or for cash. At our shop, we ask our customers to round up each transaction to the next even dollar. That change has been accumulating since January and is for the art departments in the Trinidad School District One. We've even paid, like I said, to rent the space behind our shop inside, inside Space to Create for several of our functions. I've learned a lot about social media since becoming a business owner, and I coined the hashtag Local Art for Local People for SoCo Mountain Art, because as a collective group, we have felt that it, that is who we are. The residents of Trinidad have been more than supportive, as well as so many tourists. And because of all these factors, I believe we have had a successful business. It's important that I thank you for, I thank you for the more than generous opportunity for our location in Space to Create. People tell us all the time that we have a cool vibe and that the shop is fun, and we really enjoy their visits just as much, even if, even if they don't buy anything. So that being said, Dale and I still struggle to understand why this decision was made, and I'm looking for help from the city council. We have fledged along in that building for a year with no chain of command, and even now, we're not even really sure who to ask. We don't know what happened. We want to stay. No one from the city asked any of our plans. You know, you just said, come to city council for clarification, Mayor, and I guess that's why I'm here. Can you please help us understand the decision so we can explain it to our artists and customers who have become our friends? I, I do feel like we deserve to know that. And I'd also like to read the mission statement. For the Space to Create Trinidad, it says, "To create, foster, and preserve affordable and sustainable space for artists and arts organizations." And as I've read that, I, I just don't even know who's doing that much better than us. And lastly, if you are an artist at SoCo Mountain Art Emporium, would you stand for me, please? These are the people who are affected and just want to know why. Thank you all for your time tonight. I appreciate you.
Tom Murphy?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. It's hard to say this out loud, forty-one years ago, I participated in my first election in Trinidad. Doesn't seem possible, but time just keeps marching on. Seventeen or eighteen years ago, I did my first candidate form for the ambulance district. I did another one last year. And every year since 2005, I filmed every meet the candidates, and this year I decided, along with the Chronicle, to do my own. We're going to do it early, it's this Saturday. I think Laney has called all the candidates, but I also want to make it known that it's open to the public. We're not going to be asking questions of the candidates, I'm going to be doing that myself. But, but they, we have a seating for a hundred and fifty people, and we're, we're just going to do one person at a time. You know, when you do these things and you line up all these people, you know, the, the microphones are a problem. Every meet the candidates, Ben, there's usually a microphone problem, but if you ask a person here a question, by the time you get here, it doesn't really work. So what we're going to do is, we're going to give you the questions when you arrive, and then I'm going to moderate with the time and, and kind of encourage people along, but it's really ten minutes of free time to get up and speak publicly and tell people what you think. Ben's going to do some questions, I'm going to do some questions, and then if you have time left over, you're going to be able to say whatever you want, but it's going to be a, a hard ten minutes. And we're going to start with the mayor candidates, and we're going to go in alphabetical order, so Karen, I know with your thing going on, if you could just come over and give us, you know, a, a little bit of time and go back to your thing. There's, so we're going to do the mayor, and then the, the city council candidates. SI has agreed to provide refreshments. So we'll have people in front speaking and listening, and then people, if you want to greet the candidates, or you want to have one-on-one with people, this is a time to meet down, and, and everyone's invited. I have a couple of simple rules that I'm going to enforce, and, and one is that there's no criticism of the candidates. I don't, I don't like the TV shows where they're talking over each other and the presidential candidates are hostile. I don't, I don't think we need to do that. And, and secondly, no criticism of city staff. This is all, everybody's running for city, and there may be issues, but I don't want anybody identifying anybody personally. We don't need to go there. We're a small community, and, and calling people out at this point, I don't think is necessary. Mr. Ruger asked me a while back about profanity, and I, I, I knew with my Comcast thing, profanity's okay. YouTube frowned on it.
Oh, good.
I've just, but as a matter of decorum and good manners, I'm like, please, you know, my channel won't get canceled, but over profanity, and on YouTube, it's frowned on, but my channel isn't monetized. That is, I don't put commercials on there, you know, from national or whatever. So i- if there was profanity and you're, you're monetized, that is an issue, but I'm, I'm not, so that's okay. And I'm going to say this jokingly, the only one thing that isn't allowed is nudity, so no skin to win. So at noon at my place, this could go on with, with the four candidates, that's ten minutes, a few minutes in between, with ten people, this could go on until past three. I'm also offering, as I had before, if you bring me a step on the ballot initiative, I will gladly put it on so that people can learn about it. I know that you guys can't do it yourselves, but feel free to contact me and, and put a program together. The people that watch my channel, because they stop and, and they thank me, are the people that aren't going to get on the internet. They, they're not going to turn on their computer and go to a website or find something on Facebook. These are the older people that I guarantee you vote. They turn on their TV and they want the channel there. And, and I'm doing this earlier because I think once the ballots come out and they come back, those people turn around and vote right away. And I think if you did a sample ballot, percentage-wise, it would probably, you know, the people that get the ballots and turn them in the next day, I'm, I don't know this for a fact, but I suspect that, you know, it, it would be the same. So that's why I'm doing this earlier. Chamber may still be doing their thing, and, and they've done it for a long time, I don't know if that's part of the plan, but I know some other people are planning on some forums, and--
One minute. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We've, we've never had this many people running, so kudos for all, for, you guys know how hard it is. And so kudos for all that, that are going to take on, take this on, it's not easy. Lastly, if you want to criticize anybody, I, I know like with the parade, the people that put it on social media, some people ate them up. If you want to criticize, criticize me about this candidate form, if you like or don't like it. I know Paula being on the Blues Fest every year, they said, well, you're right, you should have done this, you should have done that. No matter what you do, you put it on the, on Facebook, the sky's blue, somebody's going to argue with you. So if you want to criticize, I can take it. You criticize me, but this is my forum and Ben's, and so please, Saturday, show up. Sorry for running, for running late.
Teresa Gruenwald?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Teresa Gruenwald. I live in Coedale, but I'm an artist in the Southern Colorado Mountain Art Emporium. Okay? A little bit, Karen talked a lot about the gallery and the good feelings and the love that we have there, not only for our work, but for each other. Okay, let me tell you what I do. I'm a photographer, I take pictures of birds, iconic Trinidad scenes, old, the Morley Church, and I take a four-by-six print, I put it on a card, I sell it for six dollars, I sell some enlarged prints for twenty, and then maybe I'll sell a piece of jewelry. And the other galleries, uh, gift shops I've been in, I would maybe make twenty dollars after six months, for six months. I make about seventy dollars a month at Southern Colorado Mountain Art Emporium, seventy dollars a month. I made three hundred dollars at Christmas, and guess where that money goes? Back into the economy. Okay? And Karen made the point that a lot of us are seniors, I am, many of us are, and when you talk about who this affects, it doesn't just affect me, I have a husband, these people have families, so you're talking about twenty-seven other families in this community. And I think the thing that concerns us is that when I asked a couple of council members Saturday and Sunday morning, Saturday and Sunday morning, they didn't know, they didn't know about this. So I just want to know, who made the decision? Was it a committee? Was it the city manager? And why was there no communication before September 1st? Why wasn't there a coming together of like minds and saying, look, we have this problem in the building? Because we have heard words like reconfiguration of the building. What does that mean? I, you know, and so why before September the 1st were we all not brought together, or Karen and Dale weren't brought together and this, and had this discussed? So that we'd have a better understanding? Because like Karen said, we're getting ready to have a birthday party for the gallery. Will we now? No. And so why wasn't that? Because the attitude of Space to Create is art, love, appreciation, and I think with people you love and care about, you talk to them, you communicate with them. We don't feel like there was any communication. And my questions too go back to the original plan of Space to Create. Was the original plan only to let galleries stay for a year and then to say, goodbye, hope you do well somewhere? What was the original plan? Somebody used the word incubator, so after you're incubated, do you get dismissed? Those are some questions I would like to have answered. I'm very active in the community, I think you all know this. I work for the elections office, so I'm, I care about this community. I care about the, the gallery, and I hope we get the questions answered. One of the things that too that bothers me, there was no alternative, it was you're out. You're out, you're gone. Was there an alternative space provided? I don't think so. So please, I hope we can get these questions answered. So please, I hope we can get these questions answered. We're all devastated from a place where we're all together as artists. We feel love, acceptance, creativity. And now we're devastated. Please, thank you for letting me speak. I hope that we can come to some good resolutions because I'm very disappointed right now and sad. And I hope this situation gets resolved. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Maria Turner?
Hello, I'm Maria Turner. I'm one of the artists here. I've been in this town for four years. I was asked to go into that gallery. We did the ribbon cutting. I was so enthusiastic. And then it got all taken away. There was nothing prepared for us anywhere. We weren't asked... We have a space that we could provide and move you over. You wouldn't believe how many people we have talked to in that gallery and they are now living here in this town. We have a couple that came last month and bought a house here. They met all of us through that gallery. It was a place of commerce, okay? And I'm all for this town. And if you don't know who I am, my son has Alnax Kitchen. I promote every single business in this town. So when this happened, I was thoroughly devastated. I'm on a fixed income, just like Karen brought up, okay? And that money basically went for gas. And it was $45 up to $250 of my sliding scale income that we have figured out with all the tourists coming through this town. We worked very hard at what we had. We just promoted this town beyond belief. And for every effort that we put into this and then were told, you're out, you're gone, that was a part of commerce in this community. And it was going wonderful. We couldn't believe it that we were one of the few galleries in town that was actually bringing in cash. It was just... I was devastated. I had to walk away and I had to go home. I have never seen... And I have lived in Newport, Rhode Island, and Bristol, Rhode Island, and I was in the arts there. And something really has to be done because now the space to create has an extremely black spot on it. And this story has gone all the way up to Denver. And it's just caused a lot of confusion in this town and other artists that want to come here. And now for this last month that we'll be there, we'll have to tell people, we're closing, we're leaving. That's it. And so our little shop with so much commerce and so much good, and now it's been taken away. So do we want to start all over again and make the effort when we don't have the community backing? When we don't have a place to go? I mean, it's that. It really is. And yes, why? Why did this happen? That's what we all want to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Ed Grego. I am chairman of the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority. I'll use my fighting as brave as I can. Just wanted to give you a little bit of information. On August the 16th and 17th last month, the Trinidad Urban Renewal hosted Southern Colorado Tiff Conference Taxation Committee Finance 101. We were the hosts. And the training was put together and facilitated by Downtown Colorado Incorporated. Our meeting on the 16th was held... Our conference was held at the new Hilton Garden Inn, which I thought was already appropriate because Trinidad Urban Renewal is a party to the development and cooperation agreements between the developer, development, the city of Trinidad, and Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority. On August 17th, we held our meeting at the Space to Create Commons. And I can tag you that everything... The reception to that was very... It was very becoming. Everybody that came, we had people from Southern Colorado as far as west, Johnstown. And they were very impressed with the city of Trinidad people. Some people were coming and taking tourists to the town and had been able to see a lot of stuff. So one of the things I just like to say to commend the city of Trinidad for all those things that have gone on, for those things that can't be seen or can't be visibly explained. We did have a lot of people that were very impressed with the city of Trinidad and all that's going on. So just more informative than anything, just to let you know that's going on. If you have any questions, you know where to find me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Grego. James, is that Lemo?
Yes. Hello. How are you, Ed? Happy. Mr. Mayor, Council. I came here five and a half years ago with the intention of joining the Space to Create. I had heard about this while I was teaching at the Cottonwood Center for the Arts up in Colorado Springs. I taught there for seven years. Helped build their ceramic program. I came here for the express reason of getting studio space in the building that I was told by the people of the Space to Create, or I think we call it Artspace, that they would be studios and that the city of Trinidad is very receptive toward it. I've been a potter all my life. I've taken real jobs at times. And I call them real jobs because I don't consider what I do as a job. It's a life. It's what I do for fun and money and just to have a creative passion. I got there at Soco on Friday night and set up my wheel outside. I've done that before on a couple of occasions now to attract a crowd. And what I do is I attract kids. And kids especially come up and play. I've got a shelf full of pottery that the kids have walked up on the curb, sat down, gotten some clay, and are now going to have a piece of pottery and about a week and a half to take home that I helped put together. I am kind of discouraged. When I got here, there was no space to create. It was an empty building and it was being worked on. And I understood all of that that went on. I don't know the whole story. I don't know if anybody here does know the whole story. But I joined Soco last year. I was invited in. Maria was just spoke a few moments ago. Told me about it. And I went down and they accepted me right away. I have a fixed income. I also have money that I have sold property up in Colorado Springs. I lived up in that region, Manitou and Colorado Springs, for a total of 42 years. So when I came down here, I knew that there would be a lot of different changes. But when I came down here, I had been involved up there on a number of art programs. I can name them all if you want, but I helped start a number of them. I was involved with a lot, especially with Cottonwood Center for the Arts and their ceramic program. It is an amazing program up there. I worked with PTSD vets in a program for five years, working with vets with a counselor. I facilitated clay and the counselor was there for them for PTSD. So I've had a lot of experience in working around a lot of different people. What I want to know is why this has been taken away? And that is the only real question I have. Again, I came here for a specific reason. That reason wasn't what I found. But I'm happy to be here. I bought my house outright five and a half years ago. I came down here eight different times looking for property. So yeah, I have a vested interest in this town now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's Joan or Joanne Geiten?
Joanne Elizabeth Marie Geiten. I'm a resident of the Artspace Lofts. And I was happy to find a place there and thrilled that I met a man and his wife in the mountains who happened to be Mr. and Mrs. Rico. They told me to go and apply there. The Artspace Lofts are not built out completely in terms of the art areas downstairs. The art carols in the Space to Create are not built out. But there is a community there. There's a community between the people that live in the Artspace Lofts and the people that do business and Soco mountain artists. And we're part of the Space to Create because it's one of a whole. And that's a grant that the city and many people worked very, very hard to get. And it would be nice if that grant would be finished and be fulfilled and take advantage of the business that they have that is providing a great service to seniors and artists and is kind of the anchor to the Space to Create building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Peters?
Good evening, all. I'm Jerry Peters. As probably most of you know, I'm the chairman of the Los Angeles County Republican Party. We are having our annual Lincoln Day dinner a week from this Saturday on September 16th at 6:00 p.m. at Fort Woodman. We have invited all 14 mayor and city council candidates to attend. And if they do, he will give a few minutes to discuss why he or she should be elected. Why are we doing this? Let's face the reality. The city of Trinidad contributes substantially to the general well-being and overall economy of the county. Even though all of us cannot vote, the election results affects all of us. Most of the candidates were invited by email and all were mailed an invitation. We are hopeful that most will take advantage of this opportunity. Obviously, anyone else in this room is invited to attend this event as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Carlos Lopez that's online. Ms. Lopez?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, Mike. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was having a challenge. I wanted to speak today pertaining to the Space to Create situation. You know, I've been doing property management for my family for 10 years now, since I've been home. And one of the things that concerns me the most about this is the fact that if we're going to be losing so many tenants, what kind of revenue stream is going to be coming in to help, you know, negate some of the costs that go along with that building? I know more than anything, having old buildings helps them not only for, you know, defraying any costs, but also looking vibrant so that way they don't start to look poor. I'm sure that you may have some idea. You know, to your statement earlier, Mr. Mayor, we have great staff that are doing things. But are these professionals in real estate management? I think that this decision should have been handled properly, probably by a real estate professional. But maybe that was. Maybe it wasn't. I don't know. But I know that having vacant buildings is not good for your building. When you start to lose life in the building, things get neglected and things start to go awry. I do find challenges with the fact that you didn't have someone go and talk to these people beforehand. Most commercial negotiations have at least a 60- to 90-day end-of-term kind of stipulation regarding any kind of termination of a lease. The fact that you chose to do this within 30 days is very challenging from a commercial application. And it's usually, well, very unprofessional. I'll be quite frank about that. I think that we are missing the boat here when it came to the original mission statement that we took on when Governor Hickenlooper was here and started to get us so excited about this idea about Space to Create with the retail application that would be the monetary mechanism in order to help all of the people that were supposed to be residing there as well as able to sell their wares. So I find this very challenging that this was done. You know, I heard that the people were informed by a real estate agent, not even by someone from the city. So I think you guys should really relook at this and have a serious conversation, not just amongst your staff, but with the tenants. Because ultimately, if you're having a one-sided conversation, you're not doing any favors for your vision of Space to Create, which I was so proud to be a part of. I was in those meetings. I was there with the chapel people and Mr. Archuleta and everyone else that came along through here. And to do this is a disservice to them and their legacy. Lastly, I'd also like to talk about Agenda Item 8D. How you're going to just appoint the highest voting, I guess, not voting, but the person who scored the highest from the last board selection for the LTAP. I don't remember seeing this in the editorial... Sorry, the electronic version of the newspaper for putting out an option for someone else to be in this position. I remember watching the last board meeting that you, Mr. Mayor, and City Manager Steve Ruger were at when the board actually chose to put it out to the public as opposed to doing this mechanism, which you are about to do tonight. You say that you are transparent, and that is wonderful to hear, but your actions speak otherwise. Just like when you remove people in the consent agenda, which if you follow Robert's Rules of Order, items like removal of personnel are never in a consent agenda. Anything of any controversial nature or anything that shouldn't have a discussion should never be in a consent agenda. And you all have been doing this according to the advice of your, you know, so professional city staff. I think you guys really need to start looking at this because the people from the outside don't perceive this transparency the way you're making it be known, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time, and I hope you really start thinking about these topics.
Thank you. Daniel Rosetti?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm here to speak. Tonight, you're going to be voting on the renovation of the grandstands at Central Park. We all know that project's been going on or happening. It was on Mike Valentine's desk when he was Public Works Director. That's how long this has been going on. And the money that was appropriated for it... I know councilors ask many times what's going on. And the question was always told engineers or set the engineers. Well, I picked up a set of plans the other day for this project. Looking at them, it went from building new grandstand to grandstand renovation now. And I'm not sure if anybody else in council has looked at those plans. But a lot of the money is not even going into the grandstands. It's going down to the outer skirts of the grandstands, retaining walls, restrooms. Nothing to do with the grandstands whatsoever. And it was always told that it was up to engineers. I talked to a couple contractors that bid on it. And in the plans themselves, they said there's multiple mistakes. I'm not putting nothing... I know the city engineer did this plan professionally. He's very professional, adequate at his job. But if you looked at the plans, the city engineer drew them up. He had inspected them and he approved them. How can one person do all of that? Maybe if somebody else looked at them, some of the mistakes might not be in there. What's going to happen with this job? You're going to have a lot of change orders. It's going to cost you a lot more money. 150 days to do this project is totally bogus. There's no way anybody's going to do it, especially in the winter time. You can't count on snowstorms. And I just think people ought to know what's happening in Trinidad, that this project's been on the table for how many years? Now, it started out as a new grandstands, and now it's a renovation. I'm going to clean up what one of the contractors told me because he used some foul language. We don't want to do that. He says, you could put makeup on an ugly person. So when the makeup wears off, what are you left with? And that's what we're doing with these grandstands, is we're just putting makeup on them. I hate to tell you that, but that's what's happening. And that's all I wanted to do, let you people know. I don't know if anybody looked at the plans, but that's what's happening. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
That concludes our petitions and communications. Onto item 5, the 10th agenda approval, approval of the regular meeting minutes of August the 15th, 2023. Special meeting minutes of August 28th, 2023. Authorized Danielle Ruhl and Jonathan Newt to continue to serve on the Planning, Zoning, and Rains Commission until such time that appointments are made to fill their seats. and drainage commission until such time that appointments are made to fill their seats. Item C, approval of special event permit, malt, venus, and spirituous. Application filed by Trinidad Los Angeles County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce at two oh one West Main Street on nine sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a representative here? Thank you for being here. Item D, approval of special event permit, malt, venus, spirituous application filed by Southern Colorado Cold Mines Memorial and scholarship at two nineteen West Main Street on nine twenty-two, twenty-three, and nine twenty-three, twenty-three. I see we have a same representative, you're also here. Thank you. Item E, approval of special event permit, malt, venus, spirituous application filed by the Trinidad Los Angeles County Chamber of Commerce at two oh four South Chestnut Street on nine sixteen, twenty, on nine sixteen, twenty twenty-three. We do have a representative here. Thank you for being here. Item F, approval of the bills on the amount of two million, forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Item G, approval of the payroll of September the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three through September the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, an amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Entertained a motion? Some move? Second?
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Tibono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item Six, we have public carings, we have none tonight. Or item seven, unfinished business, we don't have any either. Item Eight, miscellaneous business. Item Eight, consideration to appointment of Parks Recreation Advisory Board. We need two people to appoint. We have a Sean Rogan, we have Tom Schultz, Jude Sears, John Norris, and Cy Michaels. Entertained a motion? For consideration?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Let's, we need to have a discussion for these five people. If there's any, if there's two people in particular that stood out.
I don't. There were three of those individuals, I believe, that didn't even show up for interview.
Correct.
And, but I know Sean Rogan was here, Mr. Schultz was here, and was Mr. Norris here? Okay. So I think we should eliminate June Sears and Cy Michaels because they weren't at that original meeting. And then we'll go from there.
Okay. Any of those two that you feel comfortable with?
I think Mr. Rogan would be good. Mr. Schultz lives part-time in Arizona. And I believe that would be a detriment for him to serve on this board.
Okay. So that would leave John Norris?
John Norris.
I kind of agree with that. Like I say, Tom Schultz would have, he'd be a good member of the board, so it's a little difficult to run for, he does it this much in the winter months.
Are you okay with the elimination?
Yes.
I like, I know John Norris, he's pretty reliable, but he's part of the Parks and Recreation Board here.
And Sean Rogan's okay with you?
I don't, well, we'll do that.
And you're okay with the elimination of those other three?
Yes.
Okay.
Based on our interviews last time, I feel the same as the rest of council already stated. I think it would be one of the first probably.
I have the same feeling at this point in time. So we have a first and a second, and that would be for Mr. Sean Rogan and Mr. John Norris. As we have first and second appointment. Call a vote, please.
Tibono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item B, consideration of appointment to the Urban Forestry Board. We have one person that applied, Mr. Chris Bryant. Entertained a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Do you have any questions about Mr. Bryant?
I'm the liaison on that board for council. And I'm really thrilled to see that Mr. Bryant is going to apply for this position because he really has a true understanding of forestry and I think he's going to be a great asset to that board.
I think he had a background.
Yeah.
He does.
I agree with Karen. I think he'd put a good job on the board.
Okay. Okay. And council, approval of Mr. Chris Bryant. Call a vote, please.
Tibono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item C, consideration of appointments to Historic Preservation Commission. We have three people that applied, we need to appoint two. We have Mr. Chris Bryant, Mr. Lauren Rogers, and Ms. Ashley Ryan. Entertained a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. And Mr. Tibono, any?
Well, Chris Bryant's already on the urban board now, so I believe Ashley and Mr. Rogers would be a nice fit.
Okay, we have a, I don't agree because Ashley is also on the Lodging Tax Board, so we shouldn't disqualify Mr. Bryant for that. I don't, I think they're both knowledgeable. Mr. Bryant had a lot of knowledge in this field as well. I don't know how we would approve two and leave out the third because they're both, I mean, all three of them.
They only have two positions.
Right, yeah.
Kind of tough to spread them out.
Okay. I, I, I think Ms. Ryan, knowing the work that the Lodging Tax Board has ahead of them, I think my opinion would be Mr. Bryant and Lauren Rogers.
I kind of agree. I think Lauren Rogers and Chris Bryant would be good.
I think all, all three people interviewed with extreme enthusiasm and seemed very well prepared, basically on the interviews, I would say Bryant and Rogers.
You know, I really did like Ashley. I've seen her in the, she's very, she recalls that and gets it, but it's another council's consensus.
But point of clarification, your background information that we have available to us, there are only two vacancies now, but Shirley resigned her seat since the interview. So does that mean, was she an applicant or is she on the board now?
I believe she's an applicant at this point.
She's an applicant.
Yeah. Is she on the board now?
So when you interviewed, you had one vacancy?
Right.
And then Shirley Shirley, who was on the board, resigned, creating a second vacancy.
Thank you for the clarification.
Well, the consensus sounds right, is Mr. Chris Bryant and Lauren Rogers for the Historic Preservation Commission. We have a first and a second on that. Call a vote, please.
Tibono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And item D, consideration of appointment of next highest score to the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. And, you know, we've heard about that a little bit today. And, you know, Mr. Chris Miller was the next in line from the last time that we had all the applications we had. So I'm not sure what council's feelings about just appointing him to the board. It's because he was on the previous tourism board.
Yeah, I think with the forty-plus years of experience, I think his proficiency has been well proven, so I believe that would be a nice asset.
I agree as well. I've talked to Mr. Miller and I've watched a couple of the prior lodging tourism board, and I feel he would be an asset. I think when you stop and think about it too, Mr. Miller has had experience with that board, and I think he would maybe be, I know he would be a benefit to try and help what was already done with the old board with the new one because of his prior experience.
He's a, would be a.
Yes.
Definitely a part of the board, so.
Mayor, I want to inquire of council if there's any concern with using this procedure to fill that vacancy.
No, sir. Because it was, I mean, it was weighted, it was scored, and it does seem appropriate to adhere to the same process. But I don't have a legal concern or if there's anything illegal or inappropriate about using this process.
Okay. I also think Mr. Miller will bring balance and experience and a lot of enthusiasm, so I would support that.
You know, one of the things is that, you know, I'm agreement there, and I think that we need to move forward with this simply because, simply because the last meeting that was held, the selection of the chairperson was held off until we established a, you know, until we filled the board. So I think we need to move forward with this appointment. And at this next board meeting that they have, then they'll, they'll be able to vote in their new chairperson, whether that'll be. First and a second on that. Good, all ready? Could we call a vote, please? Interview, call a vote?
I don't have any good information. No.
Didn't know, then I'll make a motion. Sorry about that.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Call a vote, please. Call Mr. Miller.
Tibono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item E, authorization to begin the CBHE state revolving loan application process for the water tank rehabilitation project. Entertained a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
I think we have a discussion. Talitha, I think you are listening in. Can you give us a little bit of information on this item?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that weren't answered at the last meeting. We are very excited to move forward with this process for this water tank rehab. It's an important project and these are the funds that we think we can use to do it.
Mr. Ruder, why don't you, because, you know, we have a pretty good audience here tonight, why don't you kind of give an explanation as to what's happening with this project?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I believe it was two years ago, we had scuba divers come in and check out the status of all of our water tanks. And what we discovered is that the interior of our water tanks need significant rehabilitation. That's a common thing for maintenance, but it's certainly essential for our water supply. So we've been trying to find funding so that we can complete that project. We've talked about phasing it, but this is quintessential for maintaining our high quality of water. We're not in dire straits right now, so I don't want anyone to be concerned that our drinking water is a problem, but this is something we need to attend to sooner than later. And so this money would go towards that.
Questions from council?
You have presentations. So we're pretty aware of this situation.
Well, just for anybody listening here today, it's very important that we keep our water supply clean. This is not going to happen overnight because we've got to go through this process. We have to apply for the loan, however, the funding that may be available out there. We're continuing to look to see if there's any other funding available besides maybe a loan. But at this point, at least this will allow us to do an application process at this time. So, call a vote, please.
Tibono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item F, memorial resolution acknowledging the contributions of Marie George upon her passing. I want to read the resolution. A memorial resolution of the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acknowledging the contributions of Marie George upon her passing. Whereas Marie George faithfully served the people of the city of Trinidad as a member of the Trinidad City Council from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen seventy-six, and again from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-four. She also served as a member of the Trinidad Home Rule Charter Commission in nineteen ninety-three. And whereas during her lifetime, Marie George served this community as a member of the Trinidad Housing Board for thirty years. She was a member of the Eastern Star in Raton and Trinidad number one. She was a teacher at Park Street School for some time and was a talented seamstress. And whereas upon the passing of Marie George, the city of Trinidad wishes by this resolution to acknowledge her many contributions to the community and to express its regret and sorrow to the family of Marie George. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado. That the mayor and city council do hereby extend their condolences to the family of Marie George and that by this resolution do hereby remember the many outstanding contributions she made to the Trinidad community. Be further resolved that this resolution shall become a part of the official minutes of the proceedings of the Trinidad City Council. Any copy of the same shall be provided to the family of Marie George. Introduced and read on this fifth day of September, twenty twenty-three. And all members will sign. I think we'll have an original, correct, Audra?
Yes.
I need a motion, please. The motion is resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? She doesn't say anything else because she has been a very important part of the Trinidad community for, as I mentioned, and I read for many, many years. Call a vote, please.
Tibono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item G, consideration of bridge results for the Central Park renovation project for the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents of Trinidad commercial construction. Entertained a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Just?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Basically, I'll give you a little bit of background information on the project. The project entails renovation of Central Park, upper field, grandstands, and the surrounding field improvements, which include a concrete ADA ramp, which was required by DOJ, new concrete sidewalks, slabs, curbing gutter, asphalt parking behind the stands, striping, landscape block and terracing along the south side to facilitate additional fans, like when you have the Fourth of July event there, they can sit out there on the terraces, they won't be in the stands, it's just, it's like overflow seating. New split-faced block dugouts and storage buildings. I don't know if you see the existing storage building, they're pretty well worn out. New seating inside the stands, metal ceilings, we're trying to get rid of the pigeons. Facia soffit in the grandstands, brick veneer along the backstop with a cap, trying to go after the, we have a lot of red brick in this town, and I think Wrigley Field's pretty cold, so just a little touch to kind of dress it up. We're doing the new backs, excuse me, new storm sewer to take care of the drainage, respective inlets, new lower level ADA bathrooms, get rid of those portlets in the summertime because they stink. Be nice for the ADA patrons as well as the players. And a respected listation because it has to be lifted up to our sanitary line, along with other miscellaneous improvements. We received two bids, we had a lot of interest, we thought we were going to get at least four, but a couple bowed out at the last minute. RMS, they were the high bid of one million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand plus or minus, and a little bit was Trinidad Commercial Construction, as you stated earlier, one million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Six hundred? One hundred and sixty-three?
One hundred and sixty-three, excuse me, Mayor. One million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents. Keep in mind, this is only part of the project. We have been in discussion with Rocky Mountain Turf Solutions and through a separate park project, and they are sourced well, which basically given us their best price. We'll do the turf infill as well as we're going to turf the terraces to cut down on maintenance in of the field. So that will come hopefully here in a couple of months. We wanted the couple, the immediate things that we need to do is anything that the turf is in contact with, the dugouts, the backstop, those have to be installed as well as obviously the drain system, the new storm drain. And after that's all completed, we can release and we can have that other contractor working concurrently with Trinidad Commercial Construction, elect, accept their bid.
Questions? Mr. Tibono?
Bobby, how many sections of the seating need to be replaced or is this a complete overhaul?
We're completely replacing all the bench seating.
Every, every section?
Yep, the plans identify that, we're going, we're getting rid of the wood. We're going in with a light gauge channel, then bolt down, brand new, high back, plastic seats. And then we also, what I failed to mention is we also add an intermediate step with hand railing up to access.
The center?
Yeah, down the center goes ours, along the edges of the aisles as well. So not only ADA friendly, but if yourself are, you know, you've got something to hold on to, lock down the stands.
The entry, the entrance is going to be the same or all the entrances when you first enter?
That's correct. The entrance to the facility is the same, we didn't change any of that. We did cut in an opening near the existing bathrooms to access the terrace from that end. Then for our ADA access, we'll bring the, uh, people in wheelchairs or wherever through the stands onto the terrace because we have to make that accessible to our ADA clients as well.
When you said turf, I might have, uh, not been paying attention. It's grass, it's natural turf.
No.
It's artificial?
It is artificial, so the infield will be artificial turf as well, this is the area that's in the terraces, it'll be artificial as well.
Have, have any of the teams that use that field had a preferences? You know, it's such a multi-use facility. Is it, is turf, artificial turf the?
It is very popular. This was submitted to the teams that utilize this. The Triggers, Kim Schultz, um, the coach at the college. And I tried to get the coach in, well, there isn't a coach, maybe there is now at the high school. I invited the AD to come over, I don't know who the new coach is, to look at the plans. Number one, it's, the, the maintenance of turf is so much easier. And you go to a lot of the facilities, CSUP, uh, La Otero College, they've, they've all gone to turf now. CSUP is completely turned, Otero is almost identical to this with turf infield with a real grass outfield. They play in Garden City, Kansas, identical to what we're proposing here, turf infield, uh, real turf outfield.
That makes sense.
We've cut down on irrigation, we've cut down on trying to drag the field. In the summertime, if we get an event, a storm, five minutes later they can complain because we have an underdrain store, a storm system that collects that water. In the past, it gets so muddy you have to cancel the ballgames. It's, it's kind of a win-win in my opinion.
So is, I can't remember, are the, the concrete in the grandstands, what kind of condition are the, is that concrete? Is it pretty good? We don't have any major?
So, we are removing sections of the grandstand. The lower walk that busts the backstop is completely coming out. We're taking out three rows of seating, uh, on the bottom right-hand side. And then, like I said, we're going in with the additional step because the step is too high, about nine inches, which per commercial code, you can't be over seven inches. So we're cutting that step in half, about four and a half inches, and we're adding additional hand railing to go up. Keep people accessing it.
That's, that's going to be good as well. So the, the, um, successful contractor, just for my education more than anything. So when you give these plans to a contractor, do they have professionals in-house to look at these plans and give you any kind of indication as to, you know, any galases or deficiencies?
They do. I mean, these, these guys that, uh, two of the bigger ones that ended up pulling out at the last stand was Houston and Bassett. You know, they, they called with questions, you know? There were other questions that were presented. We, we have a question answering process that ran up until Wednesday, before the bid date of four o'clock Wednesday, so. There was a series of questions, we administered two addendums. The first addendum was after the pre-construction meeting where all the contractors went out there and looked at it. And the second one was they had, as they dove a little bit deeper, they had a few other questions that popped up. And we addressed all those questions, so.
Well, I, I've had a couple of families that have contacted me that were concerned about the ADA, especially so I'm glad that this project is going to take care of them.
We actually invited, I think it's called ABC Group?
Yes, that's the, that's the group that contacted me.
We provided them a set of plans and, and walked them through it and they seemed really excited.
Good. Good, thank you.
Yeah, I know, uh, I talked to a couple of the guys that were, that put in the bids and that, and they were kind of concerned too about change orders and stuff. I was just kind of concerned with that too, and you asked a question about them.
Yeah.
Having their own engineers and stuff looking at it. Uh, do you feel comfortable with this?
I, I.
I mean, it's a tough question to put to you, but.
Well, we asked the contractor, he was in the audience tonight.
Seems like we get a bid and it's always change orders.
Well, I'm going to tell you there won't be a change order because it's an old structure and you don't know what you're going to encounter, but.
That's what I'm concerned about.
I think we dotted our i's and crossed our t's. So, uh, but I think Carl Gabelson with Trinidad Commercial is sitting in the, how does he feel with the, the timeline and the list of items? My staff went through this very extensively. Jenny did a great job preparing the specs, Nate helped prepare the bid schedule, which identifies not every nail and screw, but every main item. So I, I think we've covered everything.
So are there any particular items that you said you thought the contractors?
You know, I didn't answer if they were, you know.
That they mentioned in particular?
Just that they kind of thought some of their brickwork and stuff would be kind of, you know, putting it back there with the backstop, with the baseball hitting the brick and stuff.
It's a very easy procedure, you bolt on a hang wire.
Well, no, they're, they're worried about the brick getting tore up with the baseball.
Oh, well.
Is there a screen in front of it?
There is pads, it'll go back up. There's pads in the backstop right now.
Yeah, that was a big concern, that, you know, you end up putting it and then you're going to have to redo it completely.
It's, I mean, it's a solid brick, so I, I would think it. Again, I go back, I go back to Wrigley, I mean, that's what they use as a brick.
Yeah, it does look nice, but I mean, there's kind of, you know, hassles.
It's not the first time.
And the screening on the, are we doing the screening on the?
On the backstop? Yes, we have brand new screen. Cable screen.
Yeah, those were just a couple of things that they threw out, and I kind of was going to bring them up and see if we could, uh, get some information on that. But as long as you feel comfortable with it and, uh, Mr. Gabelson, I, I know they looked at it, I'm sure securely. He's, he don't want to answer any questions, but he's kind of high. But, you know, it is a big investment for us.
Absolutely.
And everybody's complained about it, so we really want to get it fixed and, and make a nice place out of it.
Mr. Gabelson's ready to talk about it.
Now let me come up here, let's talk to him.
So the kitchen sink at it this time, Bob, aren't you?
I'm not sure what you mean by the kitchen sink, but.
I've, so I've worked, I've worked the baseball, um, twice, uh, last couple of years. And this is Trinidad needs baseball, for sure. And I think this is amazing that you guys are tackling this and going full steam ahead. I'm excited about fixing that concrete down at the bottom and putting in plastic chairs and getting a bathroom done, and so this is, this is great news. That you guys are about to embark on, or as they can bid, it's going to like to find out what we can do to the baseball done by Trinidad.
Hey, Bob, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
First off, I wanted to make an observation. I really, really love, love what we do here. I mean, uh, everybody from, from this wall to that wall is here because they care about Trinidad in some way, shape or form, so, um, it's really, really good to be a part of that. The expression, um, the proof is in the pudding comes to mind. If, if we could add that, a remote that, uh, brings us to the end of this project and we see it in place, well, we'll know if we should do it or not. That's, uh, we don't have that luxury. So with that in mind, that we're all here because we care and what we are trying to determine is are we making a good pudding? I have a few questions and I apologize, some of them are going to require you to be speculative, which is probably not fair. I think you said basic, rough numbers, it's, the little bit is one point one and the high bid is one point eight, basically.
Correct, yeah.
So, um, I mean, that is pretty darn near a factor of two, which concerns me a lot. And I think, uh, it will be good to have Carl come up here in a moment, I, I agree with Mr. Shu. But a factor of two, in my experience of, um, putting stuff to bid, especially with this scope, I mean, if you are talking one hundred and two hundred dollars, you know, you put zeros behind it, it starts to be concerning. Can, do you have any ideas to why, uh, why such a large disparity?
I, I, it's going to be speculative, like you assumed. I talked to Lenny at TinCeil, he's our contractor up on First Street.
That was the one point eight length?
Yes, that is correct, RMS. Keep in mind, they're primarily a, a pipe company, they, they install utilities. What he told me today, he was kind of, he was nervous about doing like the tin ceiling. He gave us a, a price of over three thousand dollars a cubic yard for that, that handicap ramp. We see a thousand dollars all day long, and that includes the forming, the steel, the concrete. He was three times that. I, that was a sub, and I, I said, Lenny, I said, that is so far out of it. He goes, yeah, that's what our sub did, and then we put our markup on it. Uh, we see a thousand dollars all day long. It used to be five hundred dollars, but, uh, concrete's gone up, reinforcing stills gone up, and then the labor to set the forms. It's actually, it's a fairly simple, uh, ramp. It's got switchbacks in it, which requires, you can't, you know, to meet ADA requirements. So it's just one item that he said they, he says we don't put up metal ceilings, so I don't know who they got a price from. But that's kind of where it was. We did a, based on First Street, a lot of this work is similar, curb and gutter, flat work, sidewalks. We do hand railing all day long on these, uh, these handicap ramps that we're doing. Our estimate was right at the mill, just a hair over, so we thought that Trinidad Commercial Group was right, right in line and basically you look at it and you say, well, RMS really wasn't too interested in doing the project. Even though they're down here, but, and that's what he told me today.
Where is RMS out?
They're out of Alamosa.
So they're presumably, um, at least on some level, their, their bid also included per diem for some amount of workers?
That is correct, although they, I've been told they bought a building out across from the gas and that, so I don't know if it's up and running or they're living there yet, but.
Yeah, what you guys, they fixed that up?
Yes, you, you could assume that there's got to be per diem associated with that.
The other question I had, and if you, if you already said this, I apologize, but of, of every level in the grandstand, is every level going to be ADA accessible or?
That's no way possible. So what we did is we, we were given ADA access at the very top of the grandstands. We have to form in an area to provide that. If you think about it, if you were trying to do mid-level, the only way even physically possible would have to be to put in an elevator and then the aisle's not wide enough. We checked the ADA requirements and it's a certain percentage that's required. So we're, we're allowing a couple spots in grandstands on top. If they want to sit down in the bottom, uh, there, there's a couple spots and then they have this, uh, these, that special, uh, VIP seating, we've provided two seats there as well, it's two additional over on our new terrace area, so. Somebody comes in in wheelchair, they have an option, you can't discriminate.
Right.
But you, unfortunately, we can't do mid grandstand seating.
And some of the outside area would be accessible to ADA, you said, uh, the terrace area?
Absolutely. I, I, I brought the plans, I assume you guys had a chance to look at them?
I have, I've looked at them, although that, that is not my forte, but I have, I have reviewed them. The, I, just a couple other questions if I may, Mayor. Is there any performance clauses in the contract that, that will, uh, at least give us some assurance that the project will start and complete on time?
We always have liquidated damages, that, that's attached with any city type contract. It's seven hundred fifty dollars a day for any time past the hundred and fifty days. Now, the contractor can request winter and special, uh, additional request if. I, I'm hoping not, but if there is a change order and there's a week associated with it, then you add another week to the contract time. So yes, there is incentive to get it done.
And then, um, you, you talked about some of the mechanical upgrades that are going to be occurring, lift stations, potentially some other stuff. What, what, um, performance guarantees or warranties do we have on those?
We get a two-year with the, with the, from the contractor, and then you get your manufacturer warranties based on whatever the equipment is as well.
Um, I, I, I remember I wanted to ask, the, you said there's going to be a sump for stormwater below?
We're putting in a stormwater system, we're tied into an existing, uh, manhole that's over there behind First Base.
Okay.
So at least we're putting a drainage system in.
So that would, that would be gravity?
That, that is gravity, that is correct.
So it'll be less prone for silt being?
That is correct, it'll, and it'll dump into the, uh, the pond, is where it currently dumps right now. There is, uh, for the First Base dugout, there is a, a dry sump there. We don't anticipate much drainage because the dugout is covered. But if we want to go in there and spray it down, wash it down, we have a place where that, it's basically gravel sump and it'll work fine for the minimal amount of drainage that'd be inside that dugout when we see.
Um, and then one, one final thought if I may, um, it seems to me, huh, from my, um, listening tonight, that, um, there, there is a concern that the money that we're spending, um, is going to renovate the, the grandstands and the surrounding area versus potentially just invest, and if I'm, if I'm misunderstood this, I apologize, but, um, rather than spending the amount of money to renovate solely the grandstands to a higher standard. But the, at least the way that I see it, um, that's pretty clearly two separate projects and we have a limited amount of money. I think, um, what we really, really want to do, when I say we, I mean, uh, city council, city staff and city citizens, working together, we really want the biggest bang for our buck. It seems to me that if we can touch every single element that we've talked about with certainty that, uh, it's, it's gonna, um, turn out to the best level possible. I think this is going to be a fantastic, um, really, really nice facility for everybody. I mean, there's so many hurdles now, especially for ADA people. But, you know, in general, you go to there and you have to deal with the pigeon stuff, it sounds like we've mitigated that. I heard a lot of complaints from teams about the bathroom conditions, we're going to mitigate that, the outfield, we're going to mitigate that. We're going to, uh, can better contour that land outside and I was, I was actually at what the, not this Fourth of July, but the previous Fourth of July, and I observed a kid, um, and he was playing with rocks at the top and he caused a large rock to tumble and roll down the hill, striking the guy in the back. I mean, so, you know, if we terrace and control that area, um, you're, you're controlling that, but I think we're, we're trying to make this better for the, for the citizens and, um, that's our goal here. I'm, I'm done at that point, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd still like to hear from the contractor.
Yeah, no, um, I definitely think Carl should speak, but I just want to remind the council, the source of funding, um, for Central Park Improvements were allocated by the council because you all chose not to pursue with our broadband, um, money. And that was a few months ago, the direction we got from council was for Central Park improvements. We all know the grandstands need to be improved, but, uh, we construed that as do whatever we can with this money to address all issues that we have at Central Park. And that's exactly what Mr. Just has put together. So, um, I think to Councilman Williamson's point, more bang for our buck, we definitely need new restrooms, we definitely need to get the ADA taken care of. Tonight's the first I've heard that we would replace the grandstands in their entirety, so the money that you all allocated. So the money that you all allocated was to do improvements at the park in general and we're trying to stretch every dollar we can to do the best we can. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there for the council.
Well, you know, it's been mentioned multiple times, ADA has been critical in this particular, actually, that's what brought about this whole conversation years ago. And so it's because of the Department of Justice lawsuit against us, the reason why we're having to do this. And they forced us to do this, which is actually a good idea. A few questions I have is, what is the life of the turf, of the turf when they put it down?
It varies, but they're telling us we can see 20 to 25 years before we have to replace it. We are doing replaceable amount because it takes a lot of wear, constantly stepping down off the mound and sliding on it. And as well as the batter's box is replaceable, it basically vaporizes.
Now, one thing I was really glad to hear is, and I know that's a real problem, that last step at the bottom, all that concrete along the bottom is so beat up, I'm glad that that's being replaced, leveled up to that seven inch rise that you're supposed to have, or whatever you're talking about. So that is, you know, that is cold. And matter of fact, when I was at a baseball game this summer, I was noticing that last step is a step. So it's very dangerous, especially for someone that has bad legs or whatever. So I'm glad that you're raising that up to where it's supposed to be. The seating on that, are you, what is the rafters, are they in pretty good shape? Or they will take a new, or, because you put a new roof on it too, correct?
No, not a new roof. We replaced the roof in '16 when we had that hailstorm. We were up on top of it a couple of months ago and it's a vinyl roof and it's in good shape.
Is it vinyl or EDPN?
It's some type of membrane, which I say vinyl, but it is a membrane.
Maybe EDPN possibly. So I'm glad that you're doing something on the underside of that because one of the problems that I've heard from some of the people that attended, the birds, and you see dead birds up there now amongst the, you know, with the albinetti and all. And it's a real problem, so I'm glad that you're covering that up.
And there were some rafters replaced that appeared in the '16 because you can tell they're brand new. So they seem to be sound.
Mr. Gibson, looking at the budget.
What kind of putting are you making?
I'm sorry?
You're a very patient person.
My pleasure, I answer any questions you may have. One, you raised a question about how a process like this, how we go up bidding something. I will tell you that we in-house, we spent, we spent about 120 hours between myself and our two project managers, literally taking line item apart and costing that and bidding it. Secondly, we also send it out to a national firm, that that's what they do. They bid projects, bid projects like this. So we send it out to the national firm and it helps us, you know, feel comfortable or more comfortable with our bid numbers. So, and most of the larger firms do the exact same thing. They have both in-house bidding, because keep in mind, you know, the construction dollars are local. So what it costs to do something, you know, in San Diego is different than what it costs in Trinidad, even Denver, in Trinidad. Bob raised an interesting subject about what RMS Utilities bid for concrete flatwork and I think it was $3,300 a yard.
It was the structural.
The structural?
The structural concrete, the one that's formed.
And he mentioned that right now, most of the projects you guys are doing, it's around $1,000 a yard and I believe that we bid just under that, about $933 a yard.
Correct.
Really, what it comes down to in a bid like this is who wants the job more? Who's willing to, you know, take a smaller profit margin? And honestly, what we're looking for here is we want to be Trinidad's go-to company for old buildings and projects like this. This is our area of expertise, we're not a utility company, that's not what we do. We do buildings and that's really what this project is all about.
Carl, because the question was raised tonight, that's why I'm asking you. So when you send these out to a national company to bid, would they tell you if there was something wrong with what we're proposing as far as the plans or is the project bitted more than just with the city and the contractor?
Not generally. I mean, in a project like this that you're dealing with old structures, they've got 30 pages of plans and 50 pages of specs, something like that. Even with 30 pages of plans and 50 pages of specs, it's old buildings, it's an old project. You'll never get 100% of the details right. You know, you're guessing at some of them. And so are we as the contractor, we're speculating, well, I think, you know, I'm guessing that we can do this this year. That's what it comes down to. And at the end of the day, you hope that you, that you, you plan, you gamble. In this case, we're gambling 750 bucks a day if we go over the 150, 150-day mark, that we can get it done on time and on budget. And something we're proud of here is we use 100% local subs. 100% of this money, at least the labor money, will stay inside Trinidad and recirculate. Obviously, material money, you know, we've got to buy bench seats from where they come from and things like that. But 100% of our subs are local.
I know your construction company has a wonderful reputation, done some really good work around town.
You try hard.
You know, one of the, one of the things that we've discussed this like the last little years and talked about a complete, you know, grandstand, the cost just got astronomical.
We'll do a complete grandstand replacement if you want.
But it was astronomical and it just, it just worked out that we were able to take this money that we got and reallocated it to this project here without having to find other money. I think we might have to find another $60,000 or whatever, I'm amazed, I'm not sure what that was. However, you know, the cost of a new unit, a new grandstand would just been astronomical. And not only that, but the timeframe, to be able to reuse it, would have gone a lot, a long, you know, a lot further. You know, and anytime that, you know, where there's been some stuff that's been done, like I said, the new roof, why tear something up if it's still used? That cost alone would be astronomical.
And the structure is sound.
Right.
There's no doubt about that.
You know, and then the other question is that discrepancy of 1.7 to 1.2. I would imagine, even though that this other company may have bought a thing here in Trinidad, they're still bringing people in from out of town. That 150 days or whatever days that they actually estimate is, they've got to pay that per diem cost. And that per diem is pretty expensive because they got to house, they got to travel, they got to feed. And I saw that with some of the other projects that we've had here. And that per diem cost is really, really can raise, a project like this, $200,000, $300,000 at the drop of that. So it's, and you guys are here local and I think that anytime that we can use local people, I think that we are.
Carl brings up a good point, I failed to mention it. His mystery sub, which is a big part of this job with the new dugouts, the backstop, it'll be probably, I assume they'll probably be doing the terracing, his gym ran. He doesn't, his work stands for itself, guys.
And we're the only company he bid with.
My figure is if a baseball hits a brick wall, then it gives, there's something wrong. You know, I think the ball's going to get first, you know, so.
No, that guy's going to be signed to the majors.
Any other questions?
No, just a statement, you know, when you mentioned who the contractors are, very reputable. I mean, to me, that makes, is more important than the discrepancy in the bids.
You're always going to find, like you said.
We'll go up if you guys want us to go up a little more, get closer to RMS.
As the project goes along, there's always going to be, and it changes, just the way it is. Even in the new building, there's change orders.
It's impossible to capture everything in written documents.
There's no further questions, call the board, please.
I did, I did have a question if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
What, at one point in a project, I understand in some industries what will trigger this. As you have discovered conditions, where does it go from the contractor needs to deal with that to an available change order? How is that?
We have, we'll have discussions with Bob and his team almost daily. This is a really tight timeline. We've got a lot of hustle coming up ahead of us, we've got a lot of work to do.
If I miss this, I apologize. If this is approved, when's the mobilization date?
10 days from contract signing, if I'm not mistaken.
If you guys approve it tonight, we give Carl and Louis a board tomorrow. And then basically 10 days or thereabouts to get going.
Depends how long it takes for me to do my signature on it. Tell me here or next week.
And what contingency plans here for the teams to use while the constructions occur?
Mr. Rupert, do you have a question?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe the timing is planned so that we won't interfere with anybody's season, but we are offering Southside as an option and Bob has already talked with all of the sports team to make sure we have them squared away. And I just wanted to mention, it's, we'll issue a notice to proceed with a date for construction commence after you all approve the contract.
I think Trinidad Commercial Construction, they've done a lot of great projects and with closely observed deliverables.
And for the questions, call the board?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Schu. Councilmember Schu, I don't know if Bob mentioned this, but the design of the brick on there, that's after Fenway. He took that after Fenway.
Okay, resolution of residence expenditure, marijuana revenue received by the city, second quarter 2023. And that is the amount of $474,714. And entertaining motion, let's tell Louis second. Mr. Navarette, will you give us the list and what we've talked about in the previous work session? So everybody will know.
Good evening, council, mayor. As discussed previously in the work session, $474,000 was earned in the second quarter of 2023. And of that amount, city staff, or city projects earned 65%, which is $211.64. Reserves, $97,414. Incentives, $12,989. And then outside agencies, $3,247. That's an allocation of $474,714. Projects remain the same. We did increase this city manager strategic plan a little bit because there were some options that Steve added. And other than that, all the other requests are the same.
Questions?
I have no questions. No, I have no questions.
Any questions?
Considering previous discussion, no questions.
You know, one of the things that we, like I mentioned earlier, as we get hit on is about the uses of this money. And it's here, it's there, all the people have to do is ask.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the options that Ms. Navarette alluded to for the strategic plan, we have an opportunity to make sure we engage our consultants to personally interview all of our elected candidates after November 1st. So we increased the contract by a couple of thousand dollars to make sure they get interviews in for newly elected officials as well. So that's the point of that. We're still way below the allocated funding that the council agreed upon, so by like $30,000. So I just wanted to mention that.
No further questions? Call the board, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. I know you had a long wait, Cheryl, but thank you. Like I said, I was, actually was eliminated from tonight's meeting. Go on down to council reports.
Well, Mr. Peters already mentioned, the Los Angeles County Veterans is having for Wooten Host, the Republican Lincoln Day Dinner, September 16th, and that was it.
Hi, I'm a very positive person, so I think staff and council needs some bright spots tonight. So that's what I'm going to concentrate on. Thursday, it was a bittersweet retirement party for Chief Glorioso. But what really struck me as really amazing is the number of city staff from all departments that were there. It was, it's a genuine admiration for Chief Glorioso and it was really nice to be a part of that. Also, I want to commend the Bridgeline Corporation and a young lady by the name of Amanda Court because without them stepping in and doing something to try and resurrect 143-year-old tradition of a parade and a rodeo, we wouldn't have had it. And I know they got a lot of criticism about it, but this is their first year. And they had, you know, I think they did an excellent job with what they had to work with. And along that note, I got to watch the parade and the fire department chief back rack. You guys looked awesome yesterday, you were sharp dressed guys. You just, I mean, well, you've got to understand, it takes extra effort to do that. I mean, these, I bet some of them were on their days off, weren't they?
They were all on their days off except five.
For them to put that effort in and it makes all of us look so good. And I really appreciate that, Chief.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
And one more bright spot in the gloom and doom of Trinidad, Colorado. I got to see the newly purchased K-9 police car and it is very nice. And the dog barks, so it's all good. That's my sunshiny report for the day.
Oh, I don't, I don't have any. We went to the ARPA meeting and had two meetings with them and it was mostly just going over their budget and everything was fine. We do, I do have a couple of reports that, as soon as we get some final deals on them, then we'll bring them up at the, one from the city and then one from ARPA itself. So, but they're kind of not said yet, we're just working on them.
I have nothing to report.
Mayor, council, I just wanted to add on to what Councilman McGregor already said. And I did want, regrettably, I was not able to attend the chief's retirement party, but I did want to, from here, tell him thank you for so many years of service and just wish him the best on whatever the next endeavor may hold for him. Also, I think, I also wanted to mention, was planning to mention about the Labor Day festivities. That is a super big ask and I think it was something that a lot of Trinidad people were able to enjoy. And it is much, much better than the alternative. And if we all work together, we can support it going forward and every year we'll be better and better. I mean, it's already a great, at a great level to start from. I heard a lot of positive from the radio. I did want to say, from the South Central Council of Government Board position, that Jennifer Oliver has resigned as an executive director. And Brian Blasey was appointed as the interim executive director by the board. And Steve, hopefully he'll be reaching out to you soon. At this point, he's having his version of drinking from a fire hose, so hopefully he'll be reaching out to you soon. It is our intention to not just keep the ship upright, but set new course. So hopefully we move forward with that. I did want to, I think it's worth noting, I really appreciated the, although I'm not sure how many people are here, I really appreciated the discourse tonight. I think it was done in a very professional and heartfelt position. And I suspect, I hope I'm not out of line in saying this, I think it probably hits the whole council in the following way. You know, we talk about, we come here and we say, hey, one or two constituents approached me about this. Tonight, we had an issue that, how many, the mayor maybe hasn't counted, but I mean, multiple, multiple people took time out of their night. But I mean, multiple, multiple people took time out of their night to, uh, come here and, um, voice their concerns. There's, there's always multiple facets to every diamond. And I think, uh, the, uh, Soco Mountain is definitely a diamond. And, um, it's something that I think we should, uh, work together in some capacity and in an urgent capacity to, uh, see what resolutions can be affected. Um, I'd, I'd request, um, whatever the appropriate type of meeting is for that venue. But, um, that, that would be, uh, my input on that. Um, that's everything I have, Mayor.
Just to follow up, you know, I've already had a discussion with Mr. Rupert. And we are going to have further discussion on that next week.
Okay.
Just let you know.
Thank you, Mayor.
For all of the public to know, we're going to have further discussion. I also want to really commend the group that put together the Labor Day festivities this last weekend because when I heard about this, several, actually at the end of last year, I think it really kind of was saddening to hear that it was, could go away. And these people stepped up to the plate and anytime that somebody steps up to the plate and starts basically anew, there are going to be some things that maybe they could have done differently. It's just the way it is. But we, they need, they need the recognition that they did the best that they could do. They pulled it off and we thank them for it. I think that's, I think that's the bottom line. There's always going to be an ace here for everything. But thank, I thank them. I'm sure everyone else here, I'm sure I thanks them. We'll thank them as well. I attended a meeting, Chaffa was here last week. They wanted to tour the, uh, Space Great Project. There were probably eleven, ten or eleven of people from Chaffa were here, uh, were here to.
Yeah.
And they looked around to see what had been done.
Very impressive.
And they were very impressed with, with the project overall. Uh, also, uh, in the afternoon, the people from, there was a tourism planning group that was here. They kind of, uh.
It was Colorado Creative Industries, Mayor?
Colorado Creative Industries. Well, they're doing, they were going around the various parts of the state to try to find out how they can better the entire state for, for tourism. And, uh, there were several of us. I had to leave her there and Steve had to leave her there as well.
We have two members of our lodging tax advice report. They're there and several members of our community to, to really assist in the conversation.
But they, oh, they, they took some information. Um, I attended Chief Glorioso's retirement. I wish him well, you know, going forward. Matter of fact, it was interesting when I went home, uh, there was a tiny little police car about this big. And it's in front of his, in front of his house. And I'm going to call and say, you know, is that your new, new vehicle? Well, no, I think the chief done, had done a tremendous job for our community and keeping us as safe as he possibly can. There's always going to be issues, but I think he did a tremendous job. Uh, yesterday I got a call from this gentleman by name of Peter Hessler. And he was from the New Yorker magazine. And he wanted to talk to me about various things, not only about this, the, the community, what's going on in the community, but also, uh, issues at the state level, federal level. So we had a, had an interview with him about an hour long. That's the second time that I've had a interview from, several hours, several years ago, I had an interview from France. It was interesting. That was on marijuana industry. That was, that was interesting. But the last question I have is for Mr. Rupert. What is the, uh, now we talked a while back about Central Park, about re, by fixing the lake up?
Yeah.
What's any progress on that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
And I'll turn it over to you this time.
Okay, okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes. Uh, we've been, we've been working with Guild, so we're going to start a program where we'll basically drain and replace the water on a regular basis. We have an abundance of water here. And so we're just working out the logistics of that. Uh, Guild Ramirez is involved, Mark's involved, Bob's involved. And we're all, um, trying to figure out how we can ensure the lake stays in good, good repair going forward. So, um, I, I apologize for how long it's taking and I get the concerns out there. Les was kind enough to let me know the fountain's not working, um, which is frustrating. And, um, I guess I can't encourage the voters to vote for the lodging tax increase, but if that gets approved, we'll have more funding for those types of things and, and take those out of public works. Um, so that's, that's something to look forward to as well. Uh, I had a couple of brief updates. I wanted to mention to the council, we are targeting November seventeenth for our legislative roundtable this year. And last year we did it in January. This year we'd like to do it a little bit earlier so we can get ahead of the session. November seventeenth is terrific because it also gives an opportunity for newly elected officials to be part of the dialogue and part of that, uh, conversation. And so we'll be working with our lobbyist, Mike Azely and the mayor to get that scheduled and, uh, get the word out to our delegates, uh, to come talk about Trinidad. And then the only other thing I had for you all is, one other thing. Oh, I just wanted to mention to the council that, uh, I was in town this weekend and got to go and explore Trinidad and, and really see some amazing things. There were a lot of people out this weekend. Um, our town shows, well, uh, when you see people on the streets, everyone's very friendly. And it's, it's disappointing to me that we have such a strong social media presence that, that is kind of negative behind the scenes. But I really enjoy face-to-face interactions with people, um, and hearing people's concerns about Trinidad and how we can make this a better place. With that though, I wanted to mention to the council, I've been talking with our strategic planning consultants. So thank you all for approving that contract last week. They are so excited for Trinidad and they think this is going to be one of their favorite projects that they've worked on nationwide. So I really hope that that's a way that we can bring our community together and, and holistically look how, at how we can, we can really become a great community as, as a collective.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just a couple of things. One, I want to echo the sentiments of, of Councilman Williamson. I was not able to go to Chief Glorioso's retirement party and I regret that very much. It was a pleasure to work with him for, for the years I have been in this position. He's a class act and he, uh, we were lucky to have him and, and wish him all the best and, and he was a wonderful police chief. The last thing I, I want to say, and then it's police for people for saying this, but it felt to me like there was kind of a lot of second guessing, and maybe I'm just being overly sensitive, but kind of of Mr. Just, like the sufficiency of his plans and his work on, on the grandstanding. I, that, maybe that was just me. But I just want to say that I know council would echo my sentiments in saying that everybody has the utmost confidence in Mr. Just and his professionalism and the work he does. And I'm sorry if I read the room wrong.
I just wanted to respond to that if I may, Mayor. I just want to make a clarification. When, when we are voting to spend one point X million dollars, I, I think it's incumbent on us to ask those questions. I can say for certain it's never my intention to, um, cause anyone to second guess their professionalism or, um, or, or feel less than, but I think it is incumbent on us to spend taxpayer dollars, government dollars, grant dollars appropriately. Um, that being said, the sentiment, um, up here that I read was that we do have confidence, but we are asking provocative questions to ensure a positive outcome. We, I mean, I, and sorry for the length of this, but one, people need to know, look no further. It took a while to get there certainly, but First Street's coming along really nicely. That's a commendation to Bob and his team. Um, that's why I started my question and I'm sure the sentiment is, um, prevalent here. Uh, the proof is in the pudding. We're starting to see the, I hate the expression, but we're starting to see the pudding on First Street. So I look forward to seeing, um, the work, um, at the park and, and that, that's our sentiment. I just wanted to make that clarification, Mr. Downs.
Thank you. Fair enough. I, I would never want to discourage council from asking important questions.
So, and that's really, that's really our position as far as to ask any questions I come to mind when there's a presentation like this. And like you mentioned, we're spending one million dollars or ten million dollars.
Sure, sure.
That's, that's, that's the reason why we sit at this desk is so that, uh, we, we, if we do have questions, we're going to get them answered. And, uh, like, you know, I mentioned earlier in the first, I was asked a point of order and that, that's okay. But that's okay. And the reason why I did that, and honestly, the reason why I did that is we had a, we had a full house tonight. And I wanted them to know that we, as a council, we've said that together, that we support our staff. They are the experts.
Yes.
And we were voting, and we don't have expertise, expertise in all these things. And so we support all of our entire staff. You guys do a tremendous job.
Including our work.
Including our.
We're, you know, we're like, you know, the bee bodies. We're all human. We're going to make mistakes.
Sure.
Yeah, but we, we, we do the best that we possibly can. We move on.
Absolutely.
That being said, motion good, Jerry?
So moved.
Second? Yeah.
DeBano?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Swainson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.